Of course, the zoning board review is now in session. Let's see. We have no meeting minutes to approve. And the first item on the agenda is. Is a petition of Russell Claro for property located 601 Wapping Road being tax assessors map 64. The applicant seeking dimensional variance for second curb opening and traffic sensitive oval A district. For Article three, section G three, Mr. Claro.
Good evening.
Right hand. So we tell the truth?
Of course.
Okay, why don't you explain? Is that microphone on? Is there a green light on it?
Uh, there is.
Yeah, okay, just, yeah, thanks.
All right. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, so we're requesting a second curb cut at 601 Wapping Road to facilitate a, uh, a smoother transition on a whopping road. Backing on a whopping road is kind of a hassle. It's a straight, a straight array, a straight area of road. And turning around, it's creating a U shaped driveway similar to the one, uh, next door to me. And the one across the street from me, um, just to make it easier to get out on the road. So we don't have to back out. Uh, one of my children were backing out one day and they almost got hit. So, uh, that was my reasoning for this.
Okay, um, you own the property of 601 Wapping Road, but you're not living there.
Uh, I own it and I currently, I do not currently live there now.
Okay.
But I do spend quite a bit of time there.
Want to further explain that?
Uh.
Sort of house in a garage and a boat.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and a.
Yep. And, uh, a, yep, that's correct.
Okay.
Yep, I maintain the property. I do work on the property. Um, I use the garage for, uh, different projects that I want to build. You know, whatever I want to do over there.
Okay.
In the garage, so.
Because there was some word that you're running a business out of the garage.
That's incorrect. Uh, my main office is at Newport Shipyard. I also have one at Point Judith Marina Wakefield. And the registered, uh, location of the business is my house, which is on 110 Carter Drive.
Right. Okay, just so you know, that's not allowed.
Yes, I'm very well aware of that. Yep, that's correct.
All right, so. The curb cuts already there.
It, it, yes, um, I installed it, uh, a little over a year ago. Once I bought the property.
Right.
Um, unknown to me, I did not know I needed to seek a variance for that, uh, because it was my grandparents' property before I bought it. They passed away and instead of letting it go to sale, I bought it to try to keep the land open. So it wasn't developed. And my grandfather used to drive across it all the time, across the grass when I was a kid and, um, you know, instead of just doing that, which I, you know, grew up doing, I decided to add the gravel to make it a little safer and less muddy, to be honest with you.
Did you have an opportunity to actually review the ordinance?
I did.
So I'm just going to run through it. Um, and the reason they came up with the traffic sensitive overlay district. The reason is to facilitate the movement of traffic along major roads in Portsmouth in a safe orderly manner. To reduce the number of and increase the spacing of driveways, which may disrupt traffic flow. To reduce infringement on the rights of the public to travel roadways in a safe manner. To protect the public on major thoroughfares in the town where accidents have frequently occurred. Says all driveways opening onto streets listed in sub paragraph five of which whopping road is one. It was added in 95. Um, shall have suitable turnaround space so that automobiles do not back out onto said streets. So, uh, there's some other criteria that, you know, for future subdivisions. So the ordinance says. We really should work towards reducing the number, not increasing that. And it says, you know, to, um. All driveways onto streets listed whopping road should have suitable turnaround space that automobiles do not back out on said streets, which is your concern.
Correct.
But you have adequate space to place turnaround.
Uh, with the garage there and the spacing, I mean, I'd have to do some destruction of the property to get that and tree removal and some other things.
Just from what I saw, it would seem to me that, and again, I'm speculating because I didn't actually see it occur.
Yeah.
That whoever has the boat drives up the driveway around, parks the boat and comes out. So why couldn't the area where the boat is be turned into a turnaround to turn around and come back again?
Uh, theoretically, that could occur.
I mean, what I'm trying to find out is where there might be some sort of, although we can't take hardships into consideration, where there might be something that would be out of the ordinary. I mean, we've had them in the past where there's a handicap person. And it's very difficult for particular individuals, the way their house is laid out, how close it was to the street. I personally am just looking for something other than, you know, it's already there.
Yeah, no, understandable. Um, it just, uh, pulling in and out of that driveway all the time. It just, um, getting out on a whopping road. And, uh, it's, it's a whole lot easier to, um, pull in, pull out. And, you know, we don't have to, um, try to back out or whatnot. And, um, it just makes it, you know, to flow through the driveway and onto the road a whole lot easier for, um, everybody that uses that driveway.
Okay. Questions?
No, sir.
Lessons? Okay.
Comment. Sure. So what, what you're saying is you would like this more for safety reasons than anything else?
Uh, it's, it's, it's more, my initial, uh, doing it was safety and, um, convenience, uh, but more, more so safety after, you know, my daughter almost got hit and whatnot. But, uh, yeah, and then once, you know, as a kid, we always drove through it and it was a whole lot easier, you know, just driving around, pulling out, you could see what's going on. Um, and backing out a whole lot, you know? Yeah, a whole lot more difficult. And especially if you're going the opposite direction. You know, if you're going on the same side of the road that you, um, want to go on the right hand side, if you're trying to go on the left hand side of the road or, yeah, the other side of the road, it's, yeah, you, you might be stopping traffic the other way around or something like that, especially, you know, people don't always obey the speed limit on whopping road. So, um, that's one, you know, one of those other things that.
That's why they wanted to reduce the number of entrances and exits on whopping road.
Correct.
Um, back to my point and just to reconfirm, but you do have ample land there to put a turnaround in. Cause that's all one lot.
Right.
Right. So you could do it.
It could be done.
Right. Okay. All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you. I have to ask for a butler's or entrusted parties.
Okay.
Well. Raise your right hand. So we tell the truth?
Yes.
Full name and address.
Michael DePaola, 40 Colonel Bond Drive, Portsmouth.
Okay, Mr. DePaola.
I'm, um, I live not too far from there. Um, and I reported various violations to the town. I believe it's my personal opinion after driving up and down that road several hundred times from going to Newport. He's running a business out of there. There's a dumpster there. There's a porta john. There's numerous commercial vehicles there. Um, there's the property I had, I sent them information. The house has been rented, third party. Um, they have their own, the tenants renters have their own trashcans. He's got a dumpster there. I mean, I don't know how many different ways I got numerous pictures that I've sent to you guys. I can share these with you if you want them. Where there's been all sorts of commercial vehicles, uh, trucks, um, lettered vehicles, uh, other vehicles like employees. So if he's talking about doing projects there, it sounds like he's doing commercial projects for his business. It's, he goes even so far as his mailbox is labeled RC Electric. He even got a separate electric meter put in just for the garage.
Yeah.
If I may interrupt.
Sure.
Uh, this sounds like a code enforcement.
It is an enforcement.
And not, you're not really a zoning board.
But it relates to the why they got the curb cut. And I believe I reported to the code officials and they looked into it. But this is basically one has led to the curb cut.
Okay.
So that's my two cents.
Thank you, Mr. De.
Yeah, well, Laura says hi.
Okay. Anyone else? No one. Okay, see none. Oh, do we have one?
They just, uh, put any questions, answer, uh, Peter Robert, a butler at five, nine, three, Wapping Road. Would like to support, uh, Mr. Claro's variant of navigation request.
Okay, thanks. Okay. Alrighty, Russell Claro is before the board for property located 601 Wapping Road being tax assessors map 64. Lot 64, so you're getting a dimensional variance for a second curb opening and a traffic sensitive overlay district.
Mr. Furell. Mister Chairman, I, I have to vote to deny the application. Uh, um, the, the town ordinance are pretty clear. Uh, the town would like to, um, limit the number of, um, curb openings on the whopping road. And there's certainly ample opportunity on the property to solve the, the, um, the, the having to back out problem by having a turnaround near the garage. Uh, you'd go all over the town, myself included. We have a narrow driveway at the garage. We have a, a, a space where, you know, you can back the car up, pointing in the, point the nose at the road and drive right out. So I think we can solve that problem pretty easily without, uh, going against the town ordinances that are very clear.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Reposa.
Um. Tough one. It is. I think, you know, the zoning enforcement is up to the town and based on what we're here to vote on is the curb cut, right? So, I mean, you could ask a multitude of reasons why you want the curb cut. So. Without bias on the business portion, I would vote to approve the curb cut because I think it is, makes sense. I mean, there's, you want to architecturally have your driveway, uh, access the road in two points, you know, it's, it's done kind of dive in front of three. I'm not, you know, uh, saying I support if the business or same is, is or is not a business there, you know, I think that's up for somebody else to hack out. So it's not even, I, I approve for reasons stated, you know? All right.
Mr. Donovan.
Uh, I vote to approve. I think it's going to increase the safety situation. Wapping Road has a lot of traffic. Um, I was on it today and looking at the spot and although the curb is already there. Um, it's not just a safety issue for somebody coming out of it. It's a safety issue for cars on Wapping Road you're backed into. So I vote to approve.
Thank you. Mr. Orienzzo.
That's a tough one. I mean, looking at this property, there looks like there's plenty of, plenty of room, plenty of road frontage. To provide a turnaround in the back where the garage is without providing another curb cut. So I, I vote to deny this for the reasons previously stated and also.
Thank you. Um, the chairman also votes to deny as well. Um, you know, it's one thing to ask for an additional curb cut and there are quite a bit of ways. Those are relatively close together. But again, to Mr. Furell's point, the ordinance is pretty clear. The purpose of it was to reduce the number and increase the space in the driveways. And then it goes on to say, uh, driveways open onto the streets of this section will have suitable turnaround space. App can give testimony. There's ample. It's a very large lot where you come into the house driveway and go over where the boat is. Uh, excuse me, there's ample space that would turn around and come right back in again. So, uh, my vote is to deny as well. So, uh, a petition has been denied through to. All right. All right. Last item on the agenda is, you don't have to stay, by the way, if you don't want to. Um. And I didn't bring any water. Thank you. Have a good night. Last item on the agenda is petition by Ragged Island Brewing Company and Donovan Gray Distribution. For property located 64 Bristol Ferry Road being tax assessors map 28 block 17. The applicant seeks a special use permit. What, can I correct that, Kevin? Wouldn't that be a modification to a previously granted special use permit? It's, it's from the original permit we allowed down there. This would be a modification to it, correct? Okay. I'm asking you. All right, the applicant seeks a special use permit for an agricultural special event under Article five, section C. Subparagraph five and Article seven, section A, one L to host Ragged Island Music Festival on Sunday, June 9th, 2024. From 3:00 PM to 9:00 PM for approximately 600 attendees. Additionally, the applicant seeks specialist permit for an agricultural special event. For live amplified music from 5:30 PM to 8:30 PM every Wednesday occurring July 3rd, 2024 to August 28th, 2024. Mr. Gray, come on up. Way to tell the truth.
It's right to tell the truth, the whole truth, now about the truth.
Full name and address, please.
Matthew Gray, uh, 87 Colonel Christopher Green Road in Portsmouth.
Okay, Mr. Gray.
Uh, thank you for hearing us out on this item. Um, Ragged Island is, is looking to host a special event on June 9th, uh, during our normal hours of operation. Uh, there would be 600 attendees, a catering vendor and, uh, three bands playing live music in a field between 3:00 and 9:00 PM. Uh, they would, we are seeking the ability to have amplified music according to the town's, um, decibel requirements. Uh, we will also be working, uh, we have already come up with a plan with the police and fire. As well as, uh, we will be hiring a third party security team, uh, to manage the event with us. Um, and then it's kind of an all hands on deck approach from our staff and, uh, you know, all of the, the members of the Ragged Island team to manage the event. Um, we believe this event will help us in our small business by exposing new and returning customers to, uh, the experience that we've created at the farm. Uh, we believe this event will be managed easily on our property with all the parking required. Um, and we also have the contact information for any ticket holders. So we can contact them about carpooling, encouraging them to, uh, cycle or to use alternative, uh, transportation such as Uber. Um, it is on a Sunday afternoon and because of that, it being a longer, uh, afternoon event, we'd anticipate most people would be carpooling and or seeking alternative routes of travel that day. Uh, we are also here, um, to talk about, uh, a group of Wednesday night concerts, which would be 5:30 to 8:30. Concerts, a very loose term. We're not Gillette Stadium. We're not Great Woods. We are a small farm brewery in a residential neighborhoods. We're very, uh, cognizant of our neighbors. They're, uh, you know, with all the, the sound, uh, equipment, uh, we don't need to blow people away. We are, we can be probably well within, within and under the, uh, decibel requirements in our, uh, neighborhood setting. Uh, most of those nights, it would be the area directly behind our decks out on our lawn and strictly just be that lawn area. So it does not need to be sound that needs to travel, you know, miles or anything like that. Um, so we're here tonight to seek those special use variances.
Okay, so question for you. Um, this, the June 9th event. That's, uh, ticketed, is that ticketed patrons only?
Correct.
So the general public won't be allowed onsite?
Uh, they won't be allowed to that area. We have thought about closing completely that day, uh, something we've considered. We have not ruled it out. Uh, two years ago, we hosted the Ocean State Beer Festival with 500 attendees in that same field, that same exact location we're talking about. We did remain open to the public that day with no issue. Um, obviously with a concert, there might be more excitement, maybe more people wanting to attend than to try and sneak into a beer festival. But that's why we have security and that's why we have a parking plan. And that's why we'll be managing it that way.
Okay, um. The Wednesday night series. We all kind of know what happened last year.
On one of the evenings when we got overrun by more people than we anticipated, yes.
Right. Um. Is that band or that group coming back?
The Ravers would be on our list to come back for sure. Um, I don't think the, you know, people who came that night will all come back. Um, it was, you know, parking was a challenge. We weren't ready for that as far as the parking and the staffing levels go. So we had to close our parking lots, although we had many more places to park cars that day. We just didn't have a way to facilitate getting them on and off the property safely with the people that kind of arrived. Definitely a family oriented event and, and the challenge on a Wednesday night would be everyone's meeting there versus carpooling to get there, uh, especially when the 5:30 PM start. Um, you know, we do, we, we did have a, a very successful day. I think it went off without a hitch, without, you know, some, some challenge with parking in the neighborhoods. Um, but I did speak with the police about that, you know, there's, there are no, um, you know, parking restrictions on either Willow Lane or Brownell Lane that I'm aware of, uh, anywhere up and down the streets. Um, certainly be willing to work with the town to put up the no parking on one side of the road. If that was something people thought would be an issue. I don't anticipate that to be a problem. I am, but we'd be happy to work with anybody who feels it might be.
Okay, um. I do have a letter from the police and fire department. I'll read into her record shortly. Um, but one of the things I did have some discussions with Captain, uh, Kahoon. And he had mentioned, um, on the June 9th event that you would be hiring a professional security.
Correct.
Outfit to handle event security.
That is more to do bag checks. Um, you know, with, with a festival setting, people are going to be bringing things with them. We do allow outside food, um, but normally on a, a daily basis. But at this event, we will not be, and we certainly want to keep any outside alcohol out away. Uh, so we're going to be doing bag checks. We're going to be, you know, doing some perimeter security, um, just to manage the, the festival area itself. Um, but we plan to keep most, uh, anyone else, uh, all the way back up to that. Uh, the horseshoe, we call it the horseshoe right behind the brewery. Um, nobody will be allowed beyond that unless they have a ticket.
Right. Now, the Wednesday night event's totally open to the public.
Yeah, I mean, we hosted five of them last year and we should have come here first and didn't really realize that. Um, but, um, with those five, we had one night that was, you know, for, for reasons unknown, it was a gorgeous Wednesday night with perfect weather. Um, and kind of just became a little bit more than we expected, to be honest with you. And certainly, uh, yeah.
Totally.
Well, we're more prepared for those nights this year. We have our parking plan in place. We have a lot more, uh, just having another summer under our belt at the property. And there's many days where we have 500 people at the property on a regular basis now. So we can manage it.
Just for the, uh, board members and anyone in attendance, um, who may or may not be aware, there is, there is what's called the technical review committee, which consists of planning department, uh, representative from the police department, fire department. Is there anyone else leave that I missed that's on that TRC? DPW director and they will actually on a petition like this will meet and discuss with the owner to, uh, make some recommendations. So, um, I have a, uh, a copy of an email from a captain Kahoon from the Portsmouth department, um, to, uh, lay a hitch in our town plan. She says, he says, regarding the Ragged Island special use application. I agree that Mr. Gray has made the effort to be well prepared for the June 9th event. He did follow up after the meeting with our request to provide a more detailed parking map, and I'm satisfied that he is adequate parking. We had concerns prior to the TRC meeting on March 5th regarding the large crowd consuming alcohol, underage drinkers, noise complaints, et cetera. Mr. Gray has committed to four or five private security personnel, a police detail and to event managers whose function will be to roam the event and help mitigate any bad behavior. He will also be monitoring the sound levels of the live music and has scheduled the show will be over well before the nighttime sound ordinance level requirements. We are satisfied that Mr. Gray has taken the appropriate steps to leave concerns the Portsmouth Police Department had about the event. Although we don't expect any parking issues, Portsmouth Police Department will post some temporary no parking signs on Brownell in between Bristol Ferry Road and Strawberry Lane. Hopefully this will reassure residents in that area. And it's signed Captain John Kahoon. Uh, we also have one from the Portsmouth Fire Department. It is, uh, from Captain Mark Rymals. Uh, this letter is to provide a summary of issues and opinion on the special use permit application submitted by Matt Gray of Ragged Island Brewing Company. The potential problems from the fire and life safety standpoint discussed during the technical review committee meeting are as follows. Fire department access, event parking, crowd control in the tap house during the event and the possibility of having a detailed firefighter slash EMT onsite during the event. All concerns were sufficiently addressed during the meeting. At this time, the Portsmouth Fire Department has no objection with the issuance of the special use permit for the event on June 9th, 2024. Please feel free to contact me with any questions. It's signed Captain Mark Rymals Portsmouth Fire March. So just so you know. Um. Kevin, can we treat this as just one special use permit or the June 9th and the Wednesday night events? Yeah, that's, yeah, it's almost like, seems like this too, but, um, questions from the board.
I, I have, uh, one, the, uh, are you measuring the sound pressure levels at the property lines?
I don't own a decibel reader at this time, but we certainly plan to have one in our possession before the event. And, uh, you know, we will be working with a professional sound engineer and we will be very clear to that person that we need to keep it in check. We're not, you know, Newport waterfront events. We don't need to blast it. It's not going to carry over the water. We want to keep it centralized to where the event is happening.
Yeah, but some, I mean, uh, I don't know, is, what is, uh, what levels are allowed here? 65 dB during the day?
Top of your head, Lee? I don't.
I don't know.
Cause there's a daytime and a nighttime.
Yeah, I think it's 65 and 55.
But I also believe you're going to go before the council to ask for a temporary noise variance during the event.
It is, we have, uh, applied for the noise variance. Yeah, I wasn't sure that that was a different application from.
So that's not an issue.
No.
And that's, that's true for the Wednesday events too. Yeah.
Um, yeah, I've been by there during the Wednesday events, not knowing that there was a Wednesday event going on, but I would think out of an abundance of caution, you'd have no, no, which way the wind is going to blow and.
Yeah.
You know, all that.
So did you stop then? No.
Not that night, I didn't have.
And go ahead. Uh, um, Mr. Gray, uh, the treating this all as a single special use permit makes sense. But then I'd like to sort of address it all as one thing. So, so the, the, the sound limitations will be the same for all of the events.
It, yes.
Would you expect the June 9th event to be, or I'm sorry, June 9th?
Yeah, June 9th.
Yeah, the June 9th event, i- is that, would you anticipate that being louder than the ones that you had last year or the ones?
I would actually anticipate them being quieter. Um, we will be managing the personnel differently, the people with the sound engineers. Um, I was just told by the clerk I had to apply for a zoning, uh, sound variance. I didn't know that it was like asking for louder music. I just.
Um, well, I, I think it's more. I'll put it to you this way. My opinion of asking for a sound or for noise variance is that if the circumstances and are favorable to carry noise more than normal, then I would want to protect myself.
Right.
Okay. Um, cause otherwise you'd be in violation of the noise ordinance and so on and so forth. Um, I don't look at as something that I would hope the council wouldn't grant as a carte blanche.
No.
Knock yourself out for three hours exceeded.
Correct.
That's why.
And I wouldn't either.
Right, so. Uh, and, and again, they have the right to set decibel limits onto whatever the variance could be.
And then my other question was regarding the Wednesday events. Is the stage for those events the same location as the June 9th?
No, so the June 9th event is happening lower in the field. We try to kind of bring it to the center of the property, uh, for security reasons, but also for, uh, being a little bit more, uh, you know, into the center of our property. Whereas on the Wednesday nights, um, you know, we've had last year, we had, like I said, we had five of them. We had a hundred people at one night. We had 150 people another night. Um, so having those right at our main tap room and operating area, uh, was what makes sense to us.
So it'll be indoors?
No, it'll be, um, on the horse, we call it the horseshoe right outside the back of our deck area, that little brass area. It's all fenced in. It's all horseshoe shape. Uh, the, the shows would be right there exactly where they were last year. There is a stage there currently. If you, it's not a stage, it's just, it's just a piece of plywood off the ground. Um, but that's kind of the area that we would host, uh, another show.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Can, can I ask one more?
Oh, absolutely.
Uh, which direction is the band facing speakers? Is it facing towards Willow Lane or?
Um, the band on the June 9th would be facing towards Willow Lane, correct? The music would be in that direction, uh, south.
On Wednesdays.
On Wednesdays, it'll be facing to the east, um, towards Bristol Ferry Road.
Oh.
Yeah, and it basically kind of shoot it right at the building because then it just kind of. Yeah, and it basically kind of shoot it right at the building, because then it just kind of hopefully is a more of a blocker. You never know about the weather, though.
True.
Kevin, anything?
What, is it just a series of bands that's playing at the music festival or, or is it for any particular? It um. Charity or function or anything like that?
Um, I mean, the, the concert on June ninth, the, the three bands.
Yes.
Um, they're just bands that we wanted to have and host and there is no charitable aspect to it, it's just a.
It doesn't have to be.
Fun show, yeah.
Anything else? No? Okay. That comes fun part. Alrighty, I have to.
Thank you.
Have a seat, Matt. Um, about us are interested parties. Come up. Raise your right hand. Just wanna tell the truth.
I do.
Full name and address, please.
Tom Greve, one ten third Drive. Um, Ragged Island uh was obviously surprised last year by the attendance of at least one event. Um, they may be properly adjusting to that. Uh, their music festival will be limited to six hundred people by, by ticket sales. They have hired a security firm which will check bags, control admission and onsite parking. There will be a police detail and an EMT on site. There will be extra bathrooms. These are all good steps and they may mitigate any problems. There are a couple more steps I think would help. Temporary no parking signs placed along the surrounding streets and lots to prevent off-site parking. Also, noise checks on the amplified music conducted to be sure that sound levels at surrounding properties do not exceed the residential. Zoning levels which are. Sixty-five dB during the day and fifty-five dB at night. Also understand that the decibel level is a exponential scale, it is not a linear scale. However. Based on my attendance at the Technical Review Committee meeting. The steps Ragged Island has agreed to take only apply to the music festival. The Wednesday concerts use none of these controls. It was one of last year's Wednesday concerts that had almost a thousand people in attendance. This is because the Ravers is such a popular band. The Ravers are scheduled again for Wednesday, August fourteenth this year. There could be an, another equally popular band scheduled. But I'm the wrong person to tell you that. The Wednesday concerts. Do need appropriate controls, just like the music festival. I suggest that the board only approve the part of the special use permit for the music festival on June ninth. It will be evident whether the new controls work or don't after the festival. Then Ragged Island can resubmit the Wednesday concert portion of the special use permit. And the board will have empirical data to determine which controls are needed. Which don't work. And what needs to be improved. The only thing I can safely predict is that having minimal controls on Wednesday concerts will lead to problems again this year. Please consider that when you make the decision on this application. Thank you.
Mr. Gray, a quick question for you, because I want to swelch an urban myth. And that is um, that there were somewhere around a thousand attendees at the Ravens on Wednesday night. Where did you get your data from?
The data is from the Ravers website in which they thanked their almost one thousand um, uh. Fans for attending that night.
So it's just somebody on a website that says thank.
No, it is the Ravers own website saying that they had one hundred attendees. At that concert.
But no one actually took a physical count and recorded it anywhere or anything like that. It's one person's opinion. Cause I went to Clemens Market this morning and there were five thousand people down there this morning. I'm just telling you, there were.
Alright, I, 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 I.
Get my point.
I get you, I get your point. I'm telling you, this is coming not, not from somebody complaining. This is coming from the band itself thanking their people for coming.
Just by the way, to you, one point to ease you, if you recall, when you discussed marking the appropriate. Surrounding roads.
Yes.
Portsmouth Police Department has agreed to do that. Put up temporary no parking signs.
Uh, that was not discussed or decided at the Technical Review Committee.
Well, that's what came up in Mr. Kahoon's letter. I, I just.
Okay, alright, I, 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 I.
I just read that a few minutes ago.
Then, then that.
As far as, as far as concerns with parking at, say, the old daycare center. Private property, the town can't do anything about that. It would only be the owner themselves, you know?
The, the senior center was the same way.
Senior Center's town property, though.
It is, it is.
So, yeah, that would be up to the town if they want to.
That's, that's my point.
Yeah, but I get your point, oh yeah.
Okay, uh, that's, you know, that's.
Yep. Yeah, absolutely, I don't worry.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scrib. Anyone else? Alright, now we got a boatload of letters. Turn's reading. We'll take turns reading them. Nancy Howard and I go way back, so I'll read hers. Let me find her. It's the big one on top. Dear zoning board members. I'm not opposed in principle to a farm brewery hosting events to support farming. With any other legitimate agricultural operation that is compliant with conditions set forth in the current ordinance. I'm opposed to concerts and music events with hundreds of attendees on residentially zoned property. No restaurant or bar in Portsmouth hosts music events to six hundred and ten D's. Why would we allow these events on a farm located on residential property? Ragged Island has received six special use permits. Attachment one, the special use criteria from zoning ordinance is included as attachment two. Ragged Island as a manufacturing brewer is licensed annually by the Rhode Island Department of Business Regulation, attachment three. According to the Ravers Facebook page, almost a thousand people attended during an unauthorized event at Ragged Island in twenty twenty-three, attachment four. Police and fire were not present, the police. Received numerous calls from neighbors in the community. While Portsmouth is not Little Compton, Carolyn's Vineyard hosted music events in two thousand fifteen. And there was a negative impact on the neighbors and residents, so it was shut down. Please deny the special use permit by Ragged Island. And attached to it, she has some background history on special use permits. Um, tells us what we're supposed to consider out of the ordinance for a special use permit and. A copy of the manufacturing brewer's license. And a screenshot of the. Ravers uh website, so. Couple of things in here I will comment on. Um. And that is. She's opposed to concerts and music events with hundreds of attendees on residentially zoned, it's agriculture zone, not residentially zone. Ragged Island has received six special use permits per attachment. That's because of the way we initially, and Matt, you can correct me if I'm wrong. When we initially granted you a special use permit. It was capped that anything you did down there had to come back to this board, correct? That's why you've come back so many times. This is the first time I had a discussion for the record. With Mr. Gray, it was last year or the year before when you were coming before us and I said. Why don't you just ask for one that would cover you going forward? And he said. I would rather not, I would rather do it individually. Here we are. So. And then the last was um. The unauthorized event at Ragged Island. Yes, it was unauthorized, Mr. Gray admits to it, knows it, and so that. The last one is, while Portsmouth is not Little Compton, um. There's no contributing information that about Carolyn's Connet Vineyard. Uh, music events from two thousand fifteen and what negative impact on the neighbors was, so. That's opinion only as far as. I'm concerned because there is nothing supportive, so. You get the next one.
Mr. Chairman, with, with regard to uh Ms. Howard's letter.
Yes.
Uh, um, she writes, please deny the special use permit. Which special use permit, do you?
We're only dealing with one.
Right, but, but didn't this come in as two? So hers would have been addressing?
No.
What, okay.
Came in as two, that's one, I mean.
Very good, thank you.
Yep.
Um. Okay, this is the Police Department.
Right.
Fire Department.
Okay.
Is this the one? I don't know, that's Ms. Howard.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah.
That's whose is that, alright, take that.
Okay, I'll take this one.
Right, I'll take this one.
This letter is from. Uh, Caitlin Wood. Um, address shown as ninety Bristol Ferry Road Portsmouth. Hi Matthew, hope you're well, okay, and to whom it may concern. I'm sorry, I, I'm sorry I cannot make it to the town meeting to discuss the events that Ragged Island, that Ragged will be hosting this summer. I did receive the notification in the mail, but has, but had disregarded it as I thought they did a great job. Managing things last year and I know that they will, that they were tightening things this year. Hindsight twenty twenty. Haven't hindsight twenty twenty, haven't I, haven't I learned? That with my house build lol. Either way. I think that the events bring a great deal of energy to the neighborhood and a lot. Of my neighbors go. As a director butter who can hear the music in the backyard, it does not bother us one bit. In fact, my family usually makes an evening out of it and we enjoy the music in the backyard. As do our other two neighbors who live on Bristol Ferry and our next three neighbors on Brownell. Parentheses, we live on the corner, close parentheses. I read today that someone has written a letter to you guys complaining. Someone who is not in a butter, so I just wanted to speak up for myself and my unit. Six people live at our home and say that we are all thoroughly enjoy the events. And the impact they have on the neighborhood. What fun to live somewhere that we have these events that buzz with activity and excitement. And are respect, and are respectfully packed up and gone. At a reasonable hour. Please, please let them do their thing, we love it. Caitlin Wood.
Okay. Uh, it's an email from uh Maria Alamany to uh Leah Hitch and Town Planner. Firstly, thank you for your work. As neighbors of Ragged Island, we live on eighty-four Willow Lane. We fully support their efforts in creating outside live music events. Since moving to Portsmouth, we have been lucky enough to frequent Ragged Island Brewery and Farm. The Ragged Island staff and owners have always made it a space that is family-friendly. Enjoyable to spend the day and listen to live music. I am sure I'm not the only person who has expressed their support, but I would like to emphasize. That by supporting a business as locally owned as Ragged Island, which is staffed by local people. It is very important for the people of the community, but also for our town. As neighbors of Ragged Island, the outside music events have never caused an issue of disturbance, nor has the parking. We are lucky enough to be able to walk to the event. I am in full support of the Ragged Island Brewery events and owners. As they have brought so much care to a beautiful farm that have otherwise have been improperly unaffordable housing. They have created a beautiful community and a fun environment for all. Thank you again for your work sincerely, Maria Alamany. Alright. Sorry, it's.
This one is from Scott Durant. Good afternoon, I'm writing in support of Ragged Island's recent application for an event that they are hosting in the summer. The team at Ragged Island have gone, have done great things for our community. And what they are requesting is not at all intrusive to anyone in town. They are one of the few businesses that not only survived the COVID. Area. They were able to come out of it in a better place for the people in this community. It's time to make sure that they are. It's time to make sure that they see that we are appreciative of them. Following all the procedures and policies needed in this town to hold such a great event. For this reason, I would like to make sure, I would like to make it known that I, as a town resident. Will heartily support this application. Thank you for your time and consideration, Scott Durant, six four Dorothy Avenue, Portsmouth, Rhode Island.
Uh, this one is from an Eileen Chernoff email to Aaron Lindo. Hello, Mr. Lindo, please forward this to the zoning board. In reference to the request for a special use variance for live music at Ragged Island. As a Portsmouth resident, I fully support the proposal to have live music at Ragged Island. And feel music at the farm brewery during reasonable business hours would not capitalized have a negative effect on our community. Ragged Island continues to care about our community and is doing their best to improve the farm and the neighborhood. Thank you very much, Eileen Chernoff, twenty point wrote. Yeah, that's it. Got it.
Uh, this is an email from Tara Barnum. Good evening, I was unable to locate contact information for the zoning board members. Would you please forward this email along to them? I understand that there is a zoning board meeting this week, which will be discussing concerts at Ragged Island. I love attending the concerts that Ragged Island has and hope you continue to approve their applications. The concerts have been such a great addition to the town, providing a fun, family-friendly, local entertainment option for everyone. We are greatly looking forward to attending more this summer. Thank you sincerely, Tara Barnum.
And the last one is an email from a Anthony and Jennifer Amayo. To Leah Hitchin, it says, good afternoon. We are a resident of Portsmouth, twenty-nine Schooner Drive, and are full support of Ragged Island having a live music farm and brewery. It would be an added welcome and bring more of the community together. Thank you, Anthony and Jennifer Amayo. That's it. We have anybody online? Aaron. Hey.
I'm one.
Hello.
Nancy Parker Wilson, five eighty-two Wapping Road, Portsmouth, Rhode Island.
Ms. Wilson, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
I'm doing well, thank you.
And Matt Gray, I hadn't realized we were talking about you because I was concerned about the six oh one Wapping Road. But uh, I uh think that Ragged Island Brewing is doing a fantastic job. And support anything that they can do to uh continue to do what they do. And I, I've seen how they approach, I've watched, I'm. Gone to the concerts, but I've watched how they've approached their um. Issues with regard to getting lots of people, which is. Fantastic uh to, and to manage how they manage their music. And, you know, their Saturdays, you know, good for them. So I think we, we as a town want to port, uh, support that business. And having music really helps, as, as I know at Greenbell. That's it.
Thank you, Nancy, appreciate it. Kevin, anyone else, Aaron? Okay. Prior to voting. I have a list of conditions that I would going to propose to be placed on this. Um. And yes, I, if this is approved, I will email them to you. Kevin, I have a copy for you. Um. First is uh general event conditions. These conditions pertain to all the events, June ninth, Wednesday. Um. Unless there's a specific condition placed for a specific event. And this condition number one is any approval is conditioned on the applicant receiving a noise variance from the town of Portsmouth. Prior to any of the proposed events, that's for all of them, Matt, you gotta get it straight up front, you knew that, okay. June ninth, twenty twenty-four event conditions. Uh, first one under that is the event hours are limited to three PM to nine PM Eastern Standard Time. Next one is police detail of two Portsmouth police officers will be required to be in attendance during the June nine, twenty twenty-four event. That was per my discussion with Captain Calhoun, he would prefer to then. A fire slash EMT uh detail comprising of one Portsmouth firefighter with EMT certification. Will be required to be in attendance during the June ninth event. The applicant must contract with a professional security company to provide a minimum of four private security personnel to be present during the event. Those personnel shall wear high visibility clothing marked clearly marked event security. Next, the applicant must provide no less than two event managers to be present. Next, the applicant must provide no less than two event managers to be present during the June ninth, twenty twenty-four event. Those personnel shall wear high visibility clothing clearly marked event manager. And last one for June ninth is the applicant must provide no less than three parking attendants present during the June ninth, twenty twenty-four event, one of which will be stationed up near the entrance to the Ragged Island site. Those personnel shall wear high visibility clothing clearly marked event staff. And the primary reason, you know, to have one up there is, that's always kind of the key bottleneck area. And talking to Captain Cal, Cahoon, he would prefer the officers down and around. Okay, conditions under Wednesday night, twenty twenty-four music event conditions. Uh, if approved, the special use permit is for Wednesday nights only, starting July third, twenty twenty-four and concluding on August twenty eighth, twenty twenty-four. The Wednesday night event hours are limited to five thirty PM to eight thirty PM Eastern Standard Time. The applicant must provide no less than one event manager present during any of the Wednesday night events. Person has to be wearing high visibility clothing marked event manager. Next one is the applicant must provide no less than two parking attendants present during all Wednesday night events, one of which will be stationed at the entrance, um, to the Ragged Island site, and those personnel shall wear high visibility clothing clearly marked event staff. I spoke to both, um, Captain Cahoon and the fire department about their opinion on having police and fire on Wednesday nights, and they both agreed that it wasn't needed and that if it was, they would address it then, but they felt it was not needed. So. Those are my proposed conditions. Um, do I have a motion to accept them?
By correction, please.
Sure.
Eastern daylight time.
Eastern daylight time. Thank you.
You know, it might, but.
That's good though. I like that. So anywhere in my conditions where it was Eastern Standard Time is Eastern daylight time. God, I can't wait till we get rid of one of them.
Or a man with a watch.
Could I have a motion to accept the conditions as proposed? Can I have a second?
Seconded.
Most have been made in second to accept these conditions. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Okay. Ready to vote? Okay, Ragged Island Brewers before the board for tax system map fifty-four. I'm sorry, tax system map twenty-eight, lot seventeen. Uh, seeking a special use permit to have live amplified music on June ninth, twenty twenty-four, uh, three PM, uh, till nine PM Eastern daylight time for Ragged Island and live amplified music from five thirty, eight thirty PM every Wednesday, starting July third, twenty twenty-four and finishing up on August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. Again, this is five thirty, eight thirty PM Eastern daylight time. Mr. Furell.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, 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 I do have one procedural question.
Sure.
In, 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 um, applying for a special use permit, uh, um, I can't find any specific agricultural special use permit criteria. Am I correct in that?
There's a section on agriculture. No, the, the special criteria remains that.
Perfect.
But it's what they're allowed to do now.
Yes, 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 that's what I thought.
Right.
The application is, is our twenty.
Yeah, but it's considered zoned agricultural, isn't it? It's, Lee says yes, you say no. Designated as agricultural.
Right.
Right, yep.
We are a right to farm community. Before, there were right to farm communities.
Oh, you should see.
Okay, so, so back, back to voting. Mr. Chairman, I vote to approve this special use permit. Um, uh, the special use permit criteria outlined in Article seven, section A. If I can walk through some of that, that, uh, the use will, the desired use will not be detrimental with the controls in place and the history that we have with Ragged Island. It's, it's clear that they are motivated to meet these restrictions or meet these conditions and be a good residential neighborhood. Is it compatible with neighboring land use? This is an agricultural designation and as the planning, the planning staff has identified, uh, um, agricultural usage is compatible in every, uh, zone. Uh, will not create a nuisance or hazard with the controls in place or the controls proposed and that will be implemented. This does not create a hazard or a nuisance, provides protection to surrounding property, placing the event, the particularly the larger event in the center of the, um, property provides a lot of space between it and adjoining property, ensuring that there is adequate protection for surrounding properties. Provide safe vehicular access and parking. There is parking on site for an excess of six hundred vehicles and with the controls in place or the controls proposed, they will be, um, uh, provisions for safe traffic on, on site. Control of nose, noise, odor, lights and other objectional features, as, as been discussed, uh, sound levels will be controlled and monitored and I would not expect there to be any odors, lighting or other objectional features coming from these events. Um, solar right is not an issue, uh, conformance with the comp plan. Um, um, I don't know whether that's, uh, applicable anymore, given the, yes, yes, it is applicable. And, and given that, that this is a, a manufacturing site now in a brewery that, uh, having events that, that make that a more successful business while not harming the neighborhood is in conformance with a comprehensive plan. Protects the health and welfare of the community, yes, with the controls that are or will be in place. So for those reasons, Mr. Chairman, I vote to approve this special use permit.
Thank you, Mr. Reposa.
I also vote to approve the reasons stated by Mr. Furell. I think, uh, they do a great job over there. They bring a lot to the community. I know it's a little sticky with some of the neighbors, but I think all in all, they do a great job managing it and uh, something to do with the family and the community there in the zone.
Thank you.
All year round, you know, these events.
Mr. Donovan?
Uh, I also vote to approve, um, with maybe with the understanding, Mr. Gray, if there is a problem on with the June ninth event, you may have to make modifications on any of the larger events through Wednesday, but, uh, for the reasons stated by Mr. Furell, I'd like to approve, I vote to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Orienza.
I vote to approve as well for reasons stated by Mr. Furell.
Thank you. Um, chairman votes to approve for reasons previously stated. I know that, um, Mr. Gray has made it a point to work with the neighbors down there um, and let them know. So it wasn't like, oh gee, I got a letter in the mail or whatever. The fact that we've got at least three, if not four neighbors from all sides of the brewery that are fully supportive um, and no one in the negative, um, tells me that something's being done right. It is a family friendly place contrary to what people may think of a brewery. I have gone on there on occasions and in the summer you'll see kids running around and playing and, you know, it is. So, um, you know, when I look at the special use criteria, I agree. I mean, the only one that would be in question would be the noise, but thus the condition to have to get a variance from the town just again is hopefully sort of more of the protective, not the target, if you will. So, um, special use permit's been granted. You're all set.
Mr. Chairman, I vote to adjourn the meeting.
Could I have a second? Most have been made in second to, to adjourn. All in favor? I opposed. So, Paul.